Yeah, it's not our counter, I hear. I didn't want to cart that thing around. Thank you all very much for attending tonight. I'd like to call to order the Maricopa City Council regular meeting on Tuesday, June 18th, 2013. If you'd all please stand, I'd like to have an invocation by Vice Mayor Farrell, as well as a pledge of allegiance. I will lead that.
Please bow your heads. Lord, as we bow our heads here this evening, we ask that you please bless all the sick, the homeless, the needy, and the poor, and all the people that have lost their homes due to all these natural disasters. And, Lord, we ask that you have your hand over our military as they're serving our country and protecting us, being away from their families during this time. And, Lord, we ask that you bless the city of Maricopa. First Kings, Chapter 3, Verse 9, says, "Give us an understanding mind to know how to govern your people and know how to make the decisions on what is right and what is wrong, because whom by himself can govern your people on his own?" The answer to that question is nobody. That's why, Lord, we ask for your presence tonight. We ask for your wisdom and your knowledge to lead us and guide us into the direction that you want your city led in. We ask that you bless the city council, the administration, the staff, and all the citizens of this wonderful city, and let us all come together and be unified as one to make Maricopa a place where people want to live, work, and play for many generations to come. We ask this in your Holy Spirit name, and everybody said, "Amen."
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you for that prayer. That was very nice. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Chappados.
Here.
Councilwoman Gusty.
Here.
Councilmember Kimball.
Here.
Councilmember Potter.
President.
Vice Mayor Farrell.
Here.
Mayor Price.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, we have a call.
Thank you very much. At this time, I'd like to move to Item 3.1, proclamation declaring support for the arts and humanities for the city of Maricopa. I'm going to come down there and read it down there. I'd like to invite those up that would like to come. Come on, stand right up here. Thank you very much for being here tonight. Appreciate it. Thanks so much. Thanks. These are a few of the members of the Arts Council that we've discussed a little bit tonight, and they've very much collectively gotten together on their own and really led this charge, so we really appreciate that. We think it's going to be an invaluable service to the city of Maricopa. I wanted to read the proclamation that we have for you here tonight. It says, "Whereas the citizens who volunteer their time provide assistance which cannot be measured in terms of dollars, volunteers provide a spirit of helping that multiplies in value when each citizen reaches out to assist another. And whereas volunteers throughout the city of Maricopa donate their time to enter to a wide variety of human services programs such as alcohol, drug rehabilitation centers, senior centers, battered women's shelters, programs for child abuse prevention..." Is this the right one? This may not be the right one. But nonetheless, we're still very excited that we have a wonderful council here today, and we'll just forget about that one. All right. So, like I was saying, it's okay. Don't worry about it. There's still volunteers, and we really appreciate that. All right. So we'll start over again. Okay, so, "Whereas the arts and humanities..." Does that sound better? Were you on the right track here? "And much of the accumulated wisdom, intellect, and imagination of humankind; and whereas the arts and humanities enhance and enrich the lives of every American; and whereas the arts and humanities play a unique role in the lives of our families, our communities, and our country; and whereas the arts nourish human development, and that artistic expression of all kinds connects and strengthens our cities; and the arts enhance the city's reputation and can be an effective catalyst for economic development. Now, I therefore, Christian Price, Mayor of the city of Maricopa, do hereby proclaim support for all artists, arts organizations, and arts and culture events in the city of Maricopa, and call upon our citizens to celebrate and promote the arts and humanities in our nation, and to specifically encourage the greater participation by those said citizens in taking action for the arts and humanities in our community." So thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I say something, Your Honor?
Absolutely, Your Honor. Absolutely.
Your Honor, distinguished members of the city council, citizens in this chamber tonight, I am speaking on behalf of the entire creative community of Maricopa, represented by a few key artists who are in the chamber tonight, to simply say it is an honor for us to accept this proclamation, and we consider it a joy to receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll get you the real one. Absolutely. We'd love to. Thanks so much. We appreciate it. Thanks for coming tonight. Now, that doesn't happen every day. Again, thanks for your patience. We'll get you a real proclamation, and we'll make it extra nice, I promise. At this time, move on to the report from the mayor. At this time, just wanted to touch base and give you a quick update. The legislative session is finally over. Some of us can breathe a sigh of relief now that I'm not having to spend two or three days a week up there and lobbying people, so that's good. At the end of the day, I wanted to let you know how TPT boiled down. As you know, early on in the system, we were worried that the bill as it was proposed would end up costing the city of Maricopa millions of dollars every year, and the reason for that was because in the simplification of the transaction privilege tax, as it's called, the TPT for short, it required that construction sales tax be taken away from cities. Now, again, in a growing city like ours, where so much of our revenue, both for our CIP projects as well as our general fund, depends on that, it really was problematic, and it was going to cause extreme heartache and hardship to the city. So we felt that it was necessary, the council felt it was necessary, as well as myself, and we put forth the effort to go down and lobby our representatives on a daily basis, practically, to let them know where we stood with this. In the end, I'd call it an 80/20. There was a compromise. We gained some certain things, we lost some certain things, and at the end of the day, we didn't lose the millions of dollars we thought we would lose. I think what we're going to end up probably losing is somewhere in the realm of between $300,000 and $500,000 a year. Now, although that's problematic, we were able to keep construction sales tax at bay and in the plan as we needed to do so. What we did lose was something called TPT for repair, replacement, or maintenance activities, and those will be now taxed at the point of sale. So it's not to say that we won't get anything. It's simply saying, though, that if the point of sale happens in another city before those repairs are made here in Maricopa, then we will not get that tax revenue, and so it's a real loss to us. We anticipate that we may be able to manage it and that we'll be able to deal with those costs as they happen based on rising tides and other avenues, and so that's certainly the hope here, but I wanted to give you the fair report and let you know that we did probably lose $300,000 to $500,000 on an annual basis, but it isn't the $1.5 million to $2.5 million that it was originally slated to be. We did also get some wins on the auditing, which was a big deal. There was a point of a portal that was proposed in legislation last year. They were going away from it this year, so we really hammered hard on that. It really makes it easy for businesses in multiple jurisdictions to do business in cities, and it's something we always supported, but for some reason, legislature was going away from it, so at the last minute, we were able to get that back into the deal, and that auditing is now done in a variety of different ways by using this portal. So, again, just to let you know that I'd say we got a B on the test, but we worked our rear ends off and end up saving ourselves construction sales tax. And if we hadn't, then the detriment would have been probably something that we wouldn't have come back from, so I'm happy to report that. But with that, that's the end of my report. I'll move on to the report from the city manager.
Members of the council, it is my privilege to introduce to you three new staff members tonight, as well as make a couple of announcements. First, I'd like to introduce, reintroduce Cynthia Seale-Hammer. She is serving in the role of Assistant City Manager while we conduct that recruitment, and I say reintroduce because she served with us in that role about a year ago for roughly six months, so we're happy to have her back helping us through this transition. I'd also like to introduce William Fay. He goes by Bill. He's our new Assistant Development Services Director. He started with us last week. He comes to us from the city of Chandler, where he was their Associate City Attorney, their Director of Capital Improvement, as well as Civil Engineer. So he also has experience with the state of Arizona as the Assistant Attorney General, and he's a registered professional engineer, so we welcome him to our team. And then the third welcome goes to Eric Server. Eric is our new library manager, and we welcomed him, I think, just this week. He's just a couple days on the job, and he comes to us from Waki, Iowa, and he also has experience in Los Angeles County. Has roughly 16 years' experience in library management. He's also bilingual in Spanish, so we're very pleased to welcome these three individuals to our city team.
Thank you.
Couple of announcements for you this evening. I'd first like to turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Micah Miranda, to discuss Shop Local, and then our Community Services Director, Jennifer Campbell, will give you an update on the Great American Barbecue.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For you tonight to do the Shop Local drawing, we're going to be doing a bonus one tonight. As we were on the road traveling last month, we did not draw, so we have two this month that we're going to draw, but some of the things I wanted to point out, very exciting week in the world of small business. Today is National Small Business Week. It runs June 17th through the 21st, so I would encourage everybody to take extra steps to support their local businesses this week. Just to put this in perspective, Maricopa residents currently spend about $262 million outside the community. This is our newest estimate. $262 million. There's one particular category I'll point out for Mrs. Schaefer. It relates to shoe stores. Currently, the city is losing about $2.5 million a year in shoe sales to outside our community, so I'm sure between yourself and the city manager, we could probably cut that in half. So add that 262. What does that mean to the city in terms of retail sales tax collection? That's approximately $0.5 million annually if our residents just shifted 10% of their spending. That would more than make up for our loss in the tax simplification plan. So I really want to encourage everybody to think about how they spend their dollars before you head out of town. Fill up your gas in Maricopa. Eat in Maricopa. Support our stores and local businesses. So for that, in honor of your shoe spinning habit, I'll have Mrs. Schaefer draw for April.
And the prize goes to Frida Sarapo. Sarapo?
We'll get it.
Sarapo.
So congratulations to our April winner and for our other shoe diva, Jennifer Campbell.
I'm telling you, you'd make a lot of money with a shoe store here.
Anybody who opens a shoe store, come talk to us. We'll help you out.
Alicia Hernandez.
So thank you very much. Appreciate everything.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, members of council. As you know, I'm here to give the update for the Great American Barbecue. First, I want to thank all the sponsors so far that have come in. So again, we have as our main stage sponsor Oakland Construction for $5,000. We have Harrah's Ak Chin for the Americana Games sponsor at $1,000, and we have a couple splashing sponsors for $500, which is ATA Karate for Kids, Maricopa Smiles, Dignity Health, and Health Net of Arizona. So so far, we've taken in a total of $8,000 in sponsorships. We do have a couple people that we are still talking to, so hopefully on July 2nd, I'll have even more good news. And probably not the most fair thing to do right now, since it's 7:00 or past and it's dinnertime, but we have 14 food vendors. They will be selling everything from hot dogs, hamburgers, turkey legs, roasted corn, tri-tip steak sandwiches, fresh french fries, snow cones, ice cream, slushies, and various drinks. So sorry to do that to everyone out here as well, but that is very tempting. We have 14 wonderful vendors that will be providing an array of wonderful goodies for everyone to enjoy. We've got eight business vendors, as well as five nonprofits so far, that will be doing everything from face painting, a baseball skill challenge, and glow sticks, and we also have a balloon twister that'll be coming that will entertain the kids, and I can see it now. Monica's not going to be happy about all the pop balloons on the field, I'm sure, but it'll give the little ones something to do before waiting for the wonderful fireworks show. Again, we are still soliciting business vendors, nonprofits, and sponsors. We are also still looking for volunteers to help with setup, teardown, decorating the Americana games, and to work some of the other areas. So if anyone is interested, the website, www.gab.maricopa-az.gov, again, there's our wonderful website specifically for the event. I also want to thank all the city departments that have been meeting with us to help make sure this event goes off with a bang, but in a good way. So again, remember, July 4th, from 6:00 to 10:00 at Pecanah Park, we are ready to have a blast, so thank you.
And that concludes the report from the city manager. At this time, we'd like to move to a call to the public. I have one speaker card at the moment from Court, so we'll certainly invite you up as well, Court, and we'll just, we'll start Court first and then move from there. Then it's anybody who wishes to participate. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. For your records, my name is Court Rich with the Rose Law Group. I'm happy to be here tonight, and I'm also joined, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Valley of the Sun YMCA, and I'm also joined in the back of the room by the President and CEO of the Valley of the Sun YMCA, George Scobis, and Ron Chambliss, who is Senior Operations with the Valley of the Sun YMCA. So we're here today primarily just to say thank you to the city after the last two years of working on the recreation center that the city has been developing for its citizens. There was an RFP process. There was an award letter issued to the Valley of the Sun YMCA, and while we look forward in the future to coming down and presenting to you more details, it's something that's very meaningful to the board. They've been involved, the Y has been involved for every step of the way for a couple years now, and it's very meaningful, and they wanted to have a chance to come down here and highlight some of the things that they feel are exceptionally important about the proposal they've made and about the presentation that we'll ultimately give on the contract that's been submitted. So first of all, I think the most important thing that I hope everyone understands is that the model that they've proposed is what you call a community shared partnership, or what they call a community shared partnership. There is no notion whatsoever that the Valley of the Sun YMCA is coming into the city of Maricopa and intends to do anything other than work with and for the city and the people of Maricopa. There is no sense of trying to come in and run things or do anything like that, and I think that's important. And what you'll see in the proposal that they've made under the RFP and to solidify the award is that they've proposed this model where they would work with, and they're very aware of the generous gift and opportunity that the Ak Chin Indian community has provided to the city of Maricopa, and their proposal has incorporated both the opportunity to work with and for the city of Maricopa, as well as the Ak Chin Indian community. The Valley of the Sun YMCA, as you may know, is a nonprofit organization. As part of their proposal to the city of Maricopa, they have promised that they would staff the center to the extent it's not already going to be staffed by city of Maricopa employees, they would only hire people from within the city of Maricopa. And so that is part of their commitment to making sure that this is, you know, by and for the people of the city of Maricopa and not an outside entity that in any way is doing anything other than working for the city. The other important aspect of their proposal that I hope has been made clear over time, but certainly is in the proposal that we've made, is that they are proposing to do this at zero financial risk to the city of Maricopa. So there was an article recently in the Arizona Republic that talked about city-run recreation centers around the valley, and this article, it's consistent with the study that the city of Maricopa had Brailsford and Dunleavy do a couple years ago, where they predicted that a purely city-run, municipally-run recreation center would lose several hundred thousand dollars a year. And that's not a, you know, Maricopa would do a bad job or anything like that, and when you look at this article in the Republic, it's consistent with just the way the economics work of completely running it yourself. For example, they highlighted 10 recreation centers from Mesa, Tempe, Awatuki, Chandler, Gilbert, and some others, and each one of those lost between $250,000 and $800,000 a year. And so what the YMCA has done in their contract that they've proposed to you all is to have a zero risk for the city of Maricopa. You can work with that $7.4 million that the Ak Chin community is giving you, and instead of using that simply to offset losses over the next 10 or 15 years, you can use that to increase programming. You can use that to make sure that the city does not lose money. The city could even explore an opportunity to make money, which would be unprecedented. And the YMCA has done these partnerships with cities and different entities throughout the state of Arizona, from Arizona State University, the city of El Mirage, city of Yuma, several other community colleges and others. And so that is something that they know how to do. They can bring excellent programming, top-of-the-line programming, to the city and do it at no economic risk. Finally, I know that we've talked with, in brief, with the Ak Chin community about this, and they have not expressed any reservations about the concept of continuing this discussion to have, you know, a community partner come in that's a nonprofit that can hire Maricopans and provide, and you'll see in our contract, we've even agreed that we would provide whatever the deal is that the city is working with the Ak Chin community on, we're happy to provide that same opportunity to them. So one other thing, actually, as I'm winding up, I know just a few weeks ago, you had the unenviable task of trying to allocate city funds to nonprofits. I say unenviable because inevitably, it causes hard decisions to be made. It's great that the city does it, but the YMCA is also, has proposed to their community model that they would be able to incorporate some of these entities that were left out just because there's only so much money to go around, and so we look forward to working with some of those entities to try to, you know, either give them gym time or use our school buses to help with bringing their kids to and from their school programs. So to wrap it up, I appreciate your time. We look forward to continuing the discussion and being able to come and sit down and talk about the specifics of the agreement, and I thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, just before we go on to another item, I just want to make sure, so there's clarification here. They were awarded a tentative award letter, so nothing would be final until there's final action by the city council, so it would take final action. So there's nothing that's been awarded. It's just a tentative award letter that would still have to come back to council for final action. I just want to clarify so there's no confusion.
Correct.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Ron Fleming, President of Global Water Utilities. For those of you that know me, know that I can talk for a long time, so I'll try to keep it brief, and I'll try to keep the spirits up, which seems to be the mood of the chamber tonight. As you know, my team and I were at the public comment session on May 30th, and again, despite what you may think, even though there were some negative elements of the public comment session, certainly mostly I see it in a positive light, okay? And that's because it's a great opportunity for me and my staff to hear the concerns of the citizens and our customers. And so based on the fact that you represent your constituents, I thought I would bring some responses back to you directly on a few of the main issues that we heard at that public comment session. First, to the question on why are we in for another rate increase? And at the end of the day, there's volumes and volumes of reasons and data that are contained inside of our rate application that you guys have purview to and have been filed with your attorney and our course are inside of the docket, and I can't go over that today in five minutes. So I just wanted to stick to one simple explanation of the main reason that we are in for, again, another rate application, and I think there's a misunderstanding around that, because as a part of the last rate case and our last rate increase, we agreed to a phase-in of our rates, and that phase-in occurred throughout 2010 and 2011, and the last piece of that phase-in occurred at the end of 2012. So what a phase-in is, is even though we were granted a certain amount of revenue by our main regulator, the Arizona Corporation Commission, the utility agreed to not get that authorized revenue for several years in order to minimize the impact on our customers. But I want to make it clear that there's only been one rate increase that Global Water has applied for and received since we came to the community over 10 years ago. The original rates were set by the developer who started the utility and a few of the original developments here on per forma financials. That's just saying, hey, we're going to start a utility and we're going to create what the financials may look like. So it was really in 2010 when we got new rates set that were based on our own operating costs in 2008 that the actual rates for what the utility is required in order to get it returned was actually set. And so today, we're only in for our second rate application, and that's just something that I hear often, and I wanted to make sure that I provided some clarity for that. We're in for our second rate application, and this rate application is because we are currently operating on 2008 rates. That's what was given to us in the last rate case. So, you know, at the end of the day, rate cases are an unfortunate thing. We certainly understand your concerns, but as a regulated utility that takes three years to process a rate application, and you can go as far as five years or longer if you include phase-ins, as we have done here, you do have to go in and apply for rates to be set on your current costs. And the simple example is as the city operates today. I don't believe that you would operate on 2008 expenses and investments made. You have to bring that current, which is what we're doing in our current rate application. Okay? The second issue, I'll have to speed up, these two are shorter than the rate side, is we heard a lot about people getting disconnection notices and calls that may be an error, and so to be clear, all of our processes around payments, notices, disconnects are prescribed inside of the regulations that we operate under. And so we just, it's simpler from a business perspective, and it's simpler from a customer service perspective, for all of our processes to just match what's prescribed inside the regulations. So that's what we do. And what we have to do is notify customers before we disconnect them 10 days in advance through a written notice. In addition to that, we have an automated system where we do call our customers as a courtesy leading up to that day of disconnect, and that system allows them to also make a payment right then and there on the call. So what it sounds like is happening is some of those disconnect notices are going out after payment, and some people are getting calls after payment. So we've researched this thoroughly. We don't think it's a systemic issue or on a large scale, but we certainly have found a few errors based on just human errors in the system. One specifically where a payment batch in April of this year was not applied timely, which could have resulted in about 164 of our customers here getting one of those calls, even though they paid. But that's at the level that we track that data and have the ability to analyze it, so we recognize the concern. We're going to focus on eliminating that as an issue, but most of the analysis leads us to determine that it's because payments that are made on the date of the due date or the night before, it takes a day for those systems to reset, and there is a call that may occur over that 24-hour period. I didn't have time to get to the last one, so I will come back in two weeks and continue to update you on the progress that we're making, on the things we hear from the council and the things we hear from our customers. The main point is, to sum it up, is that we do listen, and the evidence is inside of some of the other data that we can present to the council here, and that is, after our last rate case, we had over 100 complaints annually to the ACC based on our utilities here. Last year, we had 18 preventable complaints filed with our regulator. Okay? So we listened last time- So we listened last time after the rate, the last rate case, we spent a lot of time with the last task force, we listened to our customers, we changed processes, we improved and rebuilt our customer service, really, department, and we think we're continuing to improve those things for the city here. So I just want to continue to bring those things forward and let you know that I'm working with you and our customers, we're going to keep focusing on them until those type of complaints don't occur anymore. Okay? Thank you.
Anyone else like to come and call the public at this time? Paul?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, due to, in response to some recent events in Maricopa, the Maricopa Veterans Community has joined together to create the Maricopa Veterans Crisis Committee. And I just want to take a moment to talk about that. At the Maricopa Vet Center, starting June 10th, they're going to be offering appointments that anybody who, veterans or anybody who, family of veterans, if they want to come in and talk to some of the local people, these are Maricopians, about vet issues and just anything at all, they're there, they're taking appointments now. You can just call and make an appointment, and you can have a one-on-one to talk with some other vets for whatever might be appropriate. And so that'll be starting up on June 10th. There's phone numbers on the Maricopa website. Richard Hall, Dean Wise, Chris Flores, and Suzette Gregg are the four people taking those calls and will be making those appointments. And so I just wanted to let everybody know, if you know a vet or are a vet and you just want to start a conversation with some other vets, it'd be a great way to go. And I didn't know if Councilwoman Gussie wanted to add in.
I just wanted to follow up. Unfortunately, we're losing more of our vets to suicide now than we are to combat, and we wanted to make sure we focused on that. I also had a follow-up meeting with the Arizona Department of Internal Affairs, and they are committed to sending our service officer here. It's just a matter of planning of where they're going to sit and how many hours a week they're going to be here available, so.
So it's on the website right now, on the city website. Thank you.
Thanks very much. I know that that specifically originated out of the veterans, the VA dropping a lot of the veterans' benefits, health benefits, et cetera. So a lot of people are getting notices in the mail that those have been dropped and they have to reapply, and it causes a lot of stress. And so that's what it originated out of, and you can go and talk to the members of this committee, and they've worked through this already, they can help others work through it, they're there all the time. So I'm sure this will continue to evolve, but it's a great start, and I know we have lots of vets on this council and appreciate their service, and certainly, it's a shame that this, you know, we have to go through this, but it's nice to have some help, so thank you. With that, any other call to the public at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into item seven, which is the approval of the minutes 7.1, 7.2, and 7.3. May I have a motion to approve, please? Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This time, there are no public hearings, so we'll move to the consent agenda. Mind you, the consent agenda is minus 9.10. Can I have a motion to approve, please? Have a motion, can I have a second? Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. That takes us to the regular agenda, and 9.10 is the first item on the agenda. So with that, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Chapados. She had some concerns on that.
Not really so much concerns as, I just think with the amount of time and effort that's been put into this reorganization, for the sake of the constituents and also for council, I wanted to give Director Goodhue an opportunity to present this. There's some significant changes that are going to be happening that will impact the way we deal with development services projects, so that's why I had that pulled.
I do have to say, Mayor Price and City Council, I've been here exactly six months as of today, so you haven't scared me off yet.
We're working on it. Just kidding, we're really happy to have you.
It has been very enjoyable, I have to say that.
Okay, we're just getting some stuff queued here.
We're just queuing up. Do you want to give them our show?
I wish. It would have to happen in my first presentation also.
Well, you can talk about this up first.
Don't wait for us.
Well, while the PowerPoint comes up, I do want to tell you that what I'm bringing forth to you is a recommendation on a restructuring of the Development Services Department. Now, when you think of restructuring, you think, what did we do wrong? And it's not a case of what we've done wrong or anything, it's more of, the Zucker Audit brought out some issues, one of which was restructuring the department to create a more descriptive and clean lines of reporting for different areas within the department because the activities with Development Services are very diverse, more diverse than a traditional Development Services Department. Also, with the six months I've been on the job here, I've gone on and just been witnessing things and observing issues and items, and it's more of trying to create a structure and an environment to make staff more productive and focus on customer service and being more responsive to the citizens of Maricopa. It's still not coming up.
No, but I'm here to support you.
I know.
Do you have it?
Oh, they do have, we just don't have it up here?
Yeah.
Okay. Great, all right.
I'll be ready.
All right, thank you. All right, with that, and... Nothing likes me tonight. Oh, let's do it this way. Okay. I'm going to use my fingers, I love touchscreens. Development process, interesting thing happened a couple of months ago. We had an individual working on the front counter resign to go to another occupation, and that's a good thing for an individual. However, when that individual left, it was hard finding resources to fill in for the individual. Now, what that told me or showed me was that we're very compartmentalized within Development Services. Compartmentalization works well in a larger organization where you have a lot of resources to fill in. If somebody's gone, another person can come in, you can redistribute workloads to those other individuals. In a small organization, you need redundancy. You need to have other individuals and other sections of the area be able to fill in for that individual so your process will still flow. During this, what we discovered was, there was an individual, the Development CIP manager, who was familiar with all the facets of our development process, from any application coming in to issuing building permits and construction in the field. So what you need to do in a small organization is utilize an individual with those talents to the maximum. And what we found out, with challenges come opportunities. One of the challenges we had just recently is our building official, Bill Griffith, is retiring at the end of the month. And so that leaves a large void. Ooh, there we are. There we go. That creates a large void in our building safety division. But the opportunity is, is to be able to fill that position with another position that would address process flow and customer service, and looking at existing processes and see how to improve those processes. Also, looking at necessary cross-training of staff. If you have an individual who knows all the different facets of the development process, you can find areas where you need improvements to cross-train staff and create redundancy within the organization. And then, the one thing about this individual, what we'd have to do is reclassify the position from the Development CIP manager to the Development Manager. And that would be the individual that would replace the chief building official within the organization. Now, the Development Manager is not a technical expert in the building codes, however, myself, I've had 30 years of experience in building code administration and development, and so there would be an opportunity to appoint my position as a building official within the organization.
Just go to the next slide, because that won't... Just ask Ruben to hit the slide.
Oh, Ruben hit the slide. Now, with the reclassification of the Development Manager or Development CIP Manager, we'd have to have an individual to take over the CIP function. And so with that, we'd need to create a CIP coordinator position that would be dedicated entirely to CIP. Now, one thing is, is a question might be, well, we've got some existing projects out there that the Development CIP Manager oversees. Well, that individual will still be able to follow through those functions on the vertical construction that's happening out right now, and then also utilize some of the existing inspection talents we have in the Building Safety Division to help him with the inspection, continuous inspections of those projects. The CIP coordinator will be dedicated to the engineering function, whereas more of our new CIP projects will be more public works-related, like the grade separation, the Casa Grande Highway, those types of things, more public works-related. And so we could dedicate those projects, or this individual towards those projects, and utilize the additional resources within the engineering division of the Development Services Department. This is an interesting subject, requisition purchasing process. The talents of our individuals within our department, we're more technical experts, we're more process on the development side. We do spend a lot of time, because we are so diverse and our budget is so complex, we process a lot of purchase orders, requisitions, we're monitoring the budgets on a consistent basis. The thing we need to do is have an individual that can process this financial paperwork, keep track of our budget, give us input of where we're at at any given period of time, and someone that has that ability is extremely important to the functionality of our department. So what we would be doing is establishing a manager analyst position to provide those functions for us. Floodplain administration in the engineering division. Our floodplain administrator is currently Pinal County. We have been in discussion with a number of developers and other customers, saying that they would like to see the floodplain administration process be local here in Maricopa. We would be able to provide, I believe, a higher level of service. It's not saying we do anything different, because we are governed by, be governed by the same rules and regulations and laws as Pinal County. However, at least you're providing a local assistance to the citizens of Maricopa. And so with that, what we are looking at is reclassifying the engineering manager position to the engineering floodplain manager position. What it does, it sends a message out to the public that we're getting serious about floodplain administration, and with the job description, we want to attract an individual that has floodplain administration and management experience. The other thing we noticed within the engineering division is that, still, we're a small organization, and with that, we don't see a need to have three licensed engineers on the job. What we're looking at is, if we could make this, reclassify the senior engineering position and replace it with a engineering plans examiner position, we'd be more competitive in our recruitment process in attracting a quality individual. We would not require this individual to become licensed. We'd encourage them, though, because that would help them in their migration or transition to a higher level of position within the organization. Equipment operator. This is one, this is a position within the Public Works Department that is, it's more of a cleanup thing than anything else. Currently, we have maintenance workers out there that, once they are trained in operating the various pieces of equipment, they're able then to promote to the maintenance worker position. It allows our Public Works Department more flexibility in providing quality service, and this way, there, again, is more redundancy with a small organization than we have. Okay. Department restructuring. The audit, the Zucker Audit, recommended restructuring the department to anticipate future growth. What we have, we have basically two distinct functions within Development Services. We have the, what we call the traditional public works function, which is more of our engineering side, and then what I call a more, like a community development, a development services function that assess with private development. Those are two distinctly different functions, and as Maricopa grows, this organization's going to grow. And the Zucker Audit saw that and said, you need to structure now to then be able to maybe separate those functions in the future to make it more operational. So this is what the structure is going to look like. If you notice on the left, you see Assistant Director, City Engineer, and that individual will be over the traditional public works functions. If you notice the CIP coordinator position, that'll report to the Engineering Floodplain Manager, along with the Engineering Plans Examiner, Engineering Inspector. Those will be your resources to address the CIP projects that'll be occurring in the future. And we have Public Works Facilities Coordinator and Fleet Manager. So they make up what I would call the traditional public works operation. The director over the entire organization, the direct report, you'd still have the management analyst, the new position we're creating there, along with the Planning Zoning Administrator, which supervises or manages the planning functions, and then the Development Manager, which will manage the building safety functions and incorporate the two permit technicians that we recently hired. So a recommendation effective July 1st is, there's a number of things I went through tonight, but eliminating the chief building official position, replacing that with a reclassified position of the Development Manager, creation of the CIP coordinator position, deletion of a senior engineer plans examiner, replacing that with an engineering plans examiner position, reclassifying the one maintenance worker position to an equipment operator, reclassifying the engineering manager to an engineering floodplain manager, establishing the management analyst position, and then finally appointing the director as a building official, and then reflecting these changes in the 2013 salary plan. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Bob. Councilman Chapados.
Thank you, Bob. That was, obviously, a lot of work and a lot of thought went into that and trying to incorporate all the Zucker recommendations, took some creative thinking, so thank you. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve agenda item 9.10 with, to accept the reorganization of Development Services and the corresponding adjustments to the salary plan.
There's been a motion, can I have a second?
Second.
A motion and second, is there any further discussion on the item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last item on the agenda tonight is 10.1. This is an ordinance, so I'm going to read this. As an ordinance of the mayor and city council, the city of Maricopa, Arizona, adopting the total primary property tax levy of $10,102,118 for fiscal year 2013-2014, and a total secondary property tax levy of $3,513,539 for fiscal year 2013-2014. This item is for discussion and action. Tom.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. I do have about a 45-slide presentation, but I will try to boil it down in just a couple of minutes here.
Excellent.
Thank you. What we're here before you tonight is really the last step of the budget adoption process. By law, we have to wait two weeks from the adoption of the budget, which happened on June 4th, before we can pass an ordinance to levy the property tax. Thanks, Ruben. Real quick, I believe most of the mayor and council understands the process. I'll go through it very briefly, just for the public. I'll overview the levy process, and then I'll look at the amounts that we intend to levy for the fiscal 13-14 year. Basically, on... Basically, on, on an individual property tax bill, we are part of many taxing jurisdictions. In Penale County, and specifically here in Maricopa, there's, we see a county levies, the school district levies property taxes, there's state school equalization, community college districts, special districts, and in the city. Typically, the city makes up, I believe historically, about 35% of a typical residential property tax bill. Two types of levies, there's the primary and secondary. Primary levy, as you understand, it supports the operations. Back in November 2006, the voters approved the, for themselves to be levied, and it was to support public safety, our police and fire operations, and that's the way we've been operating ever since. The primary levy, the increase to a levy is restricted. We cannot increase the base levy by more than 2% per year, and that is in state law. As council understands, we have not done that for the past couple of years. We've held at zero. We do have the opportunity to do it, but, but through really prudent budgeting, we've, we've, we've tried to minimize the impact on our residents, and we've, we've held that at zero. Secondary levy, that supports the repayment of our general obligation bonds. As council understands, we're currently going through the process to issue general obligation bonds to finish building the Copper Sky Recreation Complex. The way we turn around and repay those bonds is with the secondary levy. There is no restrictions to the amount that the levy can increase, however, there are state statutes that, that restrict how much GO bonds we can have outstanding at, at any point in time. So both the primary and secondary are restricted per state statute. Real quick, the levy process, there's always a lot of discussion about the rate, the rate, the rate. The way the levy works is, we determine through our budgetary needs what the levy needs to be. That is a given. We chose not to increase our primary property tax levy, so we know what that levy is going to be. We know what the net assessed valuation is, that's determined by the county assessor. The rate is the plug figure to that. So basically, what, as the, the net assessed values go up in the City of Maricopa, and if the levy stays the same, the rate would actually go down. When net assessed values go down and the levy stays the same, the rate would go up. But the idea is to really look at the amount of actual tax levy that we will be levying the, the property owners here in the, in the City of Maricopa. Quick comparison of the levies, primary levy from 1213 to 1314, you do see that there's a, about a 60, 60-some thousand, almost $70,000 increase. That is due to the new properties coming onto our tax rolls. We, by state statute, we are hold our, we are holding our levy stable. In other words, we're not taking advantage of the 2%. That information is provided to us by the Department of Revenue, so, so our levy is stable. This is not a levy increase. The other piece of that is the secondary levy. You do see the levy going up. As council understands, back in the fall, we introduced a secondary levy of $1.76. That has not changed. And the reason you see that going up, that is for the completion of the Copper Sky Recreation Finally, real quick, levy calculation for, for a home valued at $100,000, based on these rates, the, the typical residential property taxpayer would pay, their City of Maricopa portion would be about $685. If, if a value was, was double that, $200,000, you can, you can simply double the levy for a typical residential homeowner. If the levy was half that, you would cut that in half. But that's, this is a simple calculation on how this works, based on the, on the levies that, that are up for adoption. And with that, I'd be certainly happy to entertain any questions.
Heard this a couple of times, and I know that we've been very much discussing this in the public for, for quite a few weeks, but again, just for, for good measure, we are holding the levy the same, correct? Am I right in saying that?
Mr. Mayor, council, we are holding the levy the same.
There you go. Right. So not increasing anything there, keeping that stable, once again, so. Good. Well, with that, any other questions or concerns on it? Seeing none, we'll move to a roll call, please.
Need a motion and a second first.
After a motion and a second. Spend one of those nights. Thank you. Motion and second, and now let's move to a roll call.
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilwoman Gussie?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Farrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Potter?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapados?
Yes.
Councilmember Kimball?
Yes.
Mayor Price?
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much for your attendance tonight, and can I have a motion to move to each session, please?
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.